Ms. Holly Pittman here. Oh, who's speaking for the city?
Yeah, just to set it up, yeah. From the City of Leavenworth, we have their city manager, Scott Peterson, and Mayor Holly Pittman here, just to kind of talk about their ideas for the property on Gilman that's in Leavenworth City Limits. Right there is fine, yeah.
Good thing our lawyer's here.
You can lift that.
First of all, thank you all for having us here. For those of you who don't know, me and I have met before again. Scott Peterson, city manager. I've been here a little less than...
I've been here a year in November, so haven't quite been here a year yet. Already hit the ground running. First, want to take the time to say it's been a real pleasure working with Tim. This last year or so, he's been really helpful to me as I get my feet off the ground. So, just really appreciate all of his hard work, and I know he's been taking some heat lately from the community, from what I see. He's a pretty good, pretty neat egg, so I've been really, had fun working with him.
Yes, he is.
Yeah. So, long story short, we're here to talk to you guys tonight about the property that somehow is in the City of Leavenworth technically, but is surrounded by the City of Lansing. I don't know the story as to how that came to be, but here we are. It was the old City of Leavenworth landfill for quite some time, my understanding is. It still has quite a bit of trash in the ground, is also my understanding. We have been discussing here at the city on how we can improve our residential trash service. So, the city, as most of you probably know, we collect our own trash. We have our own trash department. We currently, it is the most cost-effective solution for us to take all of our garbage trucks, once they fill up, we drive them all the way down to the landfill in Shawnee, the waste management landfill. I know people don't believe that that is more cost-effective than taking it to the county transfer station, but it actually is more cost-effective than taking it to the county transfer station. The tipping fees are, just don't do, the master doesn't work. And not an attack on our friends at the county. They have to obviously make ends meet on their end, so it just is what it is, kind of a thing. So, in light of how we can improve on our transfer, our trash services, we've looked at kind of some options on how we can expand it into the future. And so, the option that we've kind of settled on for now, I'll get into that in a minute. The option we've kind of set on for now is to take that property that's out on Gilman Road and to sort of, over the next couple of years, develop it into what's called a consolidation station. So, different from a transfer station in that it is not open to the public. It is only going to be used for the first couple of years of service for the city's residential waste that we collect. So, our trucks will drive out there, dump the trash. For the most part, that trash will stay there no more than a day or two, and then we load up a full-sized semi-truck trailer, and that is driven, for now, it will be driven to Shawnee. Eventually, we would look to go to the HAMs landfill outside of Lawrence for a number of reasons. One, it would be more cost-effective to do it in a large trailer also. The other issue we are, we understand that the landfill in Shawnee is set to close before 2040. It's going to run out of space, and the first people they're going to start kicking out are the people that waste management doesn't serve directly, and that would be the City of Leavenworth. So, we're trying to look into the future there and move in that direction. Kind of give you, and then the step two of that would be, after a few years, we would do a master plan to look into turning that into a full-service transfer station like you see at the county out there. We are in talks with the county right now of maybe some kind of a cooperation with their transfer station, but those conversations are very early. I can't really give you any details on that yet. Neither governing body has been updated on that. That's entirely internal among staff. So, but just wanted you to know, if you're asking if that is an option, the answer is yes, we are looking into that. We just don't have that available to you right today. So, timeline, next year, there will be no change. You will not see any trash trucks other than what, every once in a while, we will try to send our trash trucks to the county if it's, if we can. We still, we do that now, so you won't see any difference next year. 2027 would be when we would start the construction of the consolidation station. While the consolidation station is operable, I know that there's a lot of concerns about traffic at that location. There would be minimal increase of traffic. It would only be our trash trucks as they fill up, so maybe five to six trips down that road a day during business hours, obviously, and then two or so full-sized trailer trips. So, there would be no public traffic. There would be no small-vehicle traffic, anything like that, other than our employees going to work, which there'd be one or two of them. So, that's kind of, I know that would probably be the biggest issue as we move into possibly a transfer station, and if there's going to be two or whatever, I know that would create some traffic questions and concerns. One of the reasons we are here, I want to make it clear that we want to be good neighbors. We want to work with you all and keep you up to speed on what our plans are. We want to do what we can to address concerns you have as we move forward. And I also just wanted to reassure you all that this is a multi-year project. We aren't going to just suddenly open a transfer station in the middle of your town without any consultation with you guys. So, that's the 30,000-foot view. I kind of came here to answer any questions or concerns you guys might have, and you might have for the mayor, just so you're all aware. And again, we are here in the spirit of cooperation, and we will continue to do so and keep you informed through Tim as much as we can.
Do you collect trash every day?
Monday through Friday, correct, yes.
So, every day there'll be garbage trucks?
Correct. One or two loads. So, what they would, the trucks would do is, as the trucks fill up, and that takes, each truck fills up about twice a day, depending on the route, they would take that to the transfer station. The trash would then be loaded onto a semi-trailer, which is larger than a truck, obviously, and then that would be taken to the landfill. So, and that would be about, my guys tell me it'd be about two trips of the semi-trucks a day.
Will this trash go outside?
No, it would be an indoor facility, yes. It would be almost identical, eventually it would be almost identical to what you see at the county today.
Where the trucks drive behind, and then they just push the trash into the truck?
Correct. And for the most part, the trash would not be on-site longer than 24 hours, with the exception of something that got dumped off, say, late Friday or the day before a holiday. It might sit in the facility until the next business day. But for the most part, trash would be in and out within 24 hours.
What route do you think that the trucks will take? Are you going to come down Highway 5 to Gilman?
My understanding is they would take the route down Main Street that they currently take. But again, if there are considerations we want to, you guys would like us to make there, we'd be happy to consider alternative routes. But as of now, we haven't mapped out, mapped that out yet.
Yeah, the turn to Gilman, from 7 on to Gilman, there is no real turn lane.
Right.
So, you back up, it's just going to be out there for everybody to hit.
Okay.
How come you don't open a facility in Leavenworth?
The short answer is, we don't have the right space for it.
Thornton's not, you don't have enough room on Thornton?
Which property are you referring to?
Your service center on Thornton.
Oh, no, we do not have room there for a transfer station.
That's a big piece of property.
Yeah, but we are, we share that with Parks Department, with the Police Department, and also, that's where our recycling center is. So, that would probably stay. But no, we do not have the space for a transfer station.
Disagree with that, but who's going to be responsible for the fires that happen? Because transfer stations are notorious for fires that start, and this is going to be a Leavenworth transfer station on Leavenworth property.
Sure.
So, who's going to be responsible for the fires?
I would say that that's a great question, and we would need to negotiate that with the City of Lansing. I mean, I get your point.
Didn't you, can't you expand your operation down there by the asphalt plant? Down there, you got your brush site down there, factor by the river?
The issue we have there is flooding, so that floods frequently. So, if we put a transfer station down there...
And didn't you have an option, a couple of months back, Dusty Rhodes wanted to put a transfer station there in the old Abels Field there in your industrial area, right in that area there, and you guys nixed that.
So, you are factually correct there. That predates my service time here, so I don't know the backstory to it. What I can tell you is that the Abels Field property is under contract from a private developer who's looking to develop that into a different use. So, that field is no longer available for that.
Interesting.
He didn't want to drive them down the Main Street through town? That's a lot of good luck.
Yep.
Transfer station right off K7 wouldn't be too attractive. Yeah, it's just, I mean, for us, it's a little frustrating that you're going to have two transfer stations right across the street from each other. It's kind of like...
Leavenworth County is prison state USA, will be trash state USA.
I would gladly go with the City of Leavenworth to lobby on behalf of Leavenworth, to Leavenworth County, you know, to not have to do that. I mean, that doesn't make, to me, it doesn't make a lot of sense to have to go build a transfer station when there's one across the street that Leavenworth County runs. It's like, I mean, we ought to be able to swing some kind of deal. I mean, it's not, I don't know. That's just my personal thoughts on it, I mean, I...
We would, we actually agree with you. For now, what we're operating based on the information we have available to us.
Sure, yeah, their current rates and all that, but I mean, it's...
That option is on the table, though. We're just, we, those discussions are still very early, so I can't come here and say it's going to work out that way.
Right, no.
But we are exploring that.
Okay.
Another question I have too is, how will this impact our commercial district out there adjacent to this property? I mean, with the winds out of the west, and they're dumping trash there, all that odor will be blown right into our commercial zone, where we have residents who pay rent to, you know, run a business there. So, I wonder about the impact on them, too.
Our goal would be to, it'd be an indoor facility and to make it as odor-free as possible.
You'll never contain the smell. I drive a transfer truck for a living.
Sure.
So, I know exactly what you're talking about. So, when I say there's fires, there's fires all the time.
I believe you.
Yeah, and I know the smell, trust me, so...
Yeah, anybody else have comments?
I just don't, I personally, again, I just don't like it.
I know, I mean, that's why we brought them here. We just wanted to get it out, see what they're planning. And I mean, like I said, at least from our governing body, I mean, I think it would be worthwhile to help lobby on their behalf.
I think it would make, I think it would make sense to do that.
No, I know, so...
I think Mayor brings up a really good point, but also, I do want to say too, I know there's mixed feelings about the idea, but I do applaud Leavenworth for coming here, being open about it.
Yeah.
This is an open, public meeting. They're in front of the firing squad, so, you know, kudos to Scott and Holly for being here and at least having that open dialogue, so everyone's aware of it.
I can't promise you're going to like what I have to say, but I can promise I'll be transparent about it, so, yes.
Well, if I was in their shoes, I'd be doing the same thing. I wouldn't want my trash from my city in my city if I could take it to another city and put it there, so, thank you. Thank you for the transparency.
And it is their property. No matter how it got there.
Does anybody know the history?
I...
What was the question?
The City of Leavenworth annexed that in. The City of Lansing got, at that time, the Leavenworth Country Club. So, Lansing got a country club, and Leavenworth got the dump.
Transfer station.
We get swapped back now.
At the time, that seemed like a good deal, right?
Yeah, yeah. It's like the prison or the college, you know?
Yep.
At the time, it was a good idea.
I just want to say, we might need you with the county. So, if you guys are willing to help us out, you know, that would be great. We are always in negotiations with the county, and we hope that we can still work something out with them. So, we may be calling on you for your advocacy, for your help, so...
Definitely call me.
Would definitely welcome that, so...
The trash that the county hauls goes to HAM landfill, which is where you're talking about hauling that, too. So, the rate, I don't know why the rate would be that much of a difference.
It doesn't make sense, but it is more economically...
Yep, we don't set the county's rates.
Yeah. But, yeah, so, we might for sure take you up on that offer and advocating for this, so...
All right, well, thanks so much for coming.
Thank you.
Bless me, you all, thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Thanks, Holly.
Bye-bye, guys.
Have a good one. All right. Next up is the Mid-America Regional Council presentation. Ashley is here tonight to do that.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much for having me. My name is Ashley Hand. And I'm the Director of Local Government Services with the Mid-America Regional Council. So, I joined the Mid-America Regional Council about five months ago, so I'm still pretty wet behind the ears, but I can assure you that I am very excited to be here tonight because in my role, I have the opportunity to engage with 119 cities and nine counties that are within the MARK region. And MARK has been an organization that I have worked with or worked in collaboration with in a variety of capacities over the years. Just a quick background on myself. Most recently, I worked for the Unified Government of Wyandotte County in Kansas City, Kansas, as the Director of Strategic Communications. Prior to that, I had my own advisory services company where we worked with communities across the world on how to adapt cities in an era of rapid technological innovation. So, change is inevitable. How do we evolve public policy and practices within city governments to ensure that we're really achieving the type of outcomes that we want for our community? And just before that, I worked for the City of Los Angeles and the Kansas City, Missouri, Mayor Sly James as his Chief Innovation Officer. So, I've been in the public sector for quite a bit of my career, but I'm also a registered architect, so I kind of wear several different hats. But was really excited to join MARK at this time because of the work that is being done in my department around housing, so I'll be sure to share a little bit of that update with you. I recognize that you have recently had a housing strategy developed in 2023, so it gave us some really good context to look at in terms of some of that work that we're doing regionally, and I'll be sure to touch on that because I think we can certainly find some opportunities potentially to work together, if not, bring some valuable resources to your community. So, as you may be aware, MARK is a nonprofit association of governments, city and county governments, so the 119 cities and nine counties in the bi-state region. We convene partners in planning efforts on a variety of issues, everything from aging services to quality child education, healthcare, community development, homeland security, emergency services, and the regional 911 system. We are funded by federal, state, and private grants, as well as local contributions and earned income. We don't have any taxation or regulatory authorities, so we work very much by convening and building consensus among members that are interested in pursuing various initiatives. But we do have an elected board of directors, so they represent the various communities within our memberships. We also serve as the Metropolitan Planning Organization, which means that for the federal government, we do the regional transportation planning. So, I know that Ron Acapulco has been here several times, but certainly, there are, is a lot of work that is done within Leavenworth County and Lansing around transportation as an organization. So, you may be aware, we recently re-adopted an updated regional transportation plan, and I did want to kind of just quick nod and remind you that in early 2026, there will be four different calls for projects, for infrastructure and transportation projects. That is a really good opportunity to get Lansing priorities into the pool, and hopefully, if you have something that you need funding for, you can put your project up into that kind of pool of projects that get selected for funding. So, a good opportunity for that is coming up very soon. But we also plan, do a lot of planning work that does lead to funding opportunities. So, we often are kind of working with local organizations on building the plans and strategies that are needed to bring the financing to bear. So, if you have a project around your economic development or transportation or water infrastructure, there's a variety of project types that we work on, and we support as a conduit for a lot of that federal funding that comes in for those major projects. We also offer a variety of services. Operation Greenlight is one that Lansing is part of, which coordinates traffic flow through signal coordination, which obviously is a congestion mitigation strategy, which is really important for keeping business moving. We also offer services like the Way to Go program, which is a program for employers and employees if they need alternative options to getting to work. It creates everything from carpool networks to other ways of connecting people to job access. And I know, from Lansing's perspective, I know there's a lot of people that go out to other communities to work and come in to work as well, and therefore, you know, you probably see a lot of movement on your roads, and that is important. And we, as a regional council, are always looking at better ways to improve safety and the quality of the infrastructure across the region. We also do things around air quality and water quality, as well as solid waste management. And then in our economic development area, we do quite a bit of work around workforce strategies, so working with groups like KC Rising and the Civic Council of Greater Kansas City on how do we establish stronger pipelines. We know that there are more jobs than people pursuing these jobs in our communities, and we absolutely need to have qualified and equipped workforce for the future. And so, there's a lot of investment and work that's done there. We also spend a considerable amount of time doing economic data and forecasting, so we have access to a lot of great data. We work very closely with your organization, among others, to get the type of data that we need to be able to look at kind of everything from population trends to growth trends and other things that are impacting our overall economic vitality. And through the ECMC Development Agency of the federal government, we have the Economic Development District designation, which means we are in a position to do things like the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy every five years, which also helps guide future opportunities for funding. So, we really encourage you to get involved in those opportunities because every time that we can hear from your constituents and your community about what's the particulars of what's happening in your neighborhoods and in your city, it obviously will help inform. I was also, as I mentioned, I had been working on housing since joining MARK. One of the big efforts that we have underway right now is launching what's called the Regional Housing Partnership. So, it's an acknowledgement that the housing crisis is here in the metro, whether we want to, kind of, whether we see it or not. And having read your housing study, I think you have acknowledged that there are missing pieces in your housing supply. And what we have acknowledged is that there's more, there's a need for more housing types at all price points in all areas of our region because we are seeing a big affordability issue. We, I think it was noted in your study, you're having a lot of people who are not moving up to that next kind of tier of housing, which means that people who are needing housing cannot move up to that tier to take on that housing, and it becomes this massive push that's making it very expensive for people to live in our communities. So, we have a launch event on September 30th, where we will be kicking off this work in earnest. But in the meantime, some of the things that have been underway, which I think could be of real interest, is something like our Regional Housing Fund. This is a brand-new initiative that we are building as we speak, so it is not open yet, but it is something we are working on, and I wanted you to be aware of it. But the idea is to create a civic asset that creates a pool of low-cost capital to help projects kind of get over the hump and do what they need to do to create more affordable units. So, that doesn't mean it couldn't go to market-rate housing, but it certainly opens up the ability to create a more affordable, lower-interest-rate pool of cash that is available for construction of these projects. And this pool is starting, we're trying to raise about 20 million to grow to $100 million fund in the next year and a half, with the goal of being able to open up and offer, through a managed fund, additional resources. And I think that's something for me, which was very exciting to see because it's a different flavor. It comes from foundations, raising the money as the seed for the fund, and then it'll be matched with private capital. So, a really powerful mechanism will be in our toolkit very soon as a tool to help us address the housing supply. But in the meantime, we're looking at things like our workforce, everything from the city side, and building inspectors and permit reviewers and things like that, plan reviewers, to the workforce side and the construction side. Obviously, we have seen a huge drop in the trades, and construction costs have gone up significantly, not just since COVID, but even prior to that with the Great Recession, and we just have not seen the recovery in the AEC industry, which has really created a huge impact on our housing supply. So, my favorite part of this work will be to look at the policy and process improvement that we can examine and study at a scale that is often very difficult in the local level. We often, having worked in local government, I can appreciate that it is often not a lot of time to do much more than the work that's there today. So, that kind of long-term scenarios and options can be difficult to examine. What I hope we can offer are a range of policy options that communities can consider to help alleviate some of the housing supply challenges. So, whether you're seeing pressure in your development process, whether there's issues in your zoning code, things like that, we hope to kind of develop kind of a kit of parts that can be used to right-size the right housing policy to your community, recognizing that what happens and what's good for Lansing is not going to be the same for another community anywhere else in the region. So, that's important to us. I did want to continue just some of the general services that we provide. We do a lot of safety and security for the community, mainly looking at things like our regional 911 system, which is part of my department. So, we regularly coordinate with Lansing on updating maps when it comes to the 911 call service. Basically, we provide all of the backbone infrastructure for 911 up until the call taker picks up the call. So, in the last several years, we've been working to improve some of those technologies, things like launching a new service very soon that will now route your call based on your GPS location and not on the cell tower you ping. So, if you may have had this experience that you can be close to wherever you think you are, and I live in KCK, but because of where I live in KCK, when I call because of my carrier, I can often be put through to the dispatchers over in KC Mo. And as we have heard, there are a lot of delays with those calls, and adding more volume to adjacent communities because they're following the track of the cell tower and not the actual location of the caller, obviously creates an issue. So, we're very excited to see how this new technology will allow us to reduce some of that transfer call volume that is essential right now because the technology hasn't been as sophisticated as we've needed it. We're also adding really incredible capabilities when it comes to planning for the World Cup, which obviously will have a huge impact on all of us by adding things like language translation services and other things that will make it a lot easier. One thing that our 911 team discovered, which I thought was particularly interesting, was that there are over 100 different emergency service numbers around the world. When they tried all 144, or whatever it was of them, they, only two worked here in this country. So, they have been coordinating with Homeland Security and the federal government to ensure that no matter who you are and where you come from, when World Cup is here and you need to call an emergency number, it actually ends up in our 911. So, I think there's a lot of really interesting things happening around those World Cup preparations, which I think is really exciting, but obviously going to be a huge impact on all of our communities across the metro. We host a lot of regular convenings. There's a lot of opportunities to come, share, and hear, and learn from others that are doing the work that you all are doing. Every single day, we convene groups like the Managers Roundtable, for example, where just a couple of weeks ago, we shared kind of how cities are preparing for World Cup outside of the games themselves, right? Everything from looking at transient tax increases, like they did in Bonner Springs, to update and hopefully capitalize on the number of visitors that they'll have coming through, changing things like their short-term rental policies for the short term to allow for more visitor housing during the games, to things like marketing campaigns and other activities that communities around the region are really considering just to ensure that those 650,000 people spend a little bit of time in their community and have a wonderful experience. We also do some work around quality early learning. The Leavenworth County participates in a program that we have called Early Learning Program Profile. And what it does is it targets and rates and creates an improvement system for early learning, which is a very difficult and complicated field, but we have obviously seen that how important that can be in setting up our youth for the right opportunities down the road. And so, that's one of the many ways that we engage on quality early learning. We also have our Thriving Older Adults work, where we work everything from our metropolitan official health agencies of the Kansas City area, also fondly called Mohaca. So, we convene all of the health directors across all of the counties on a quarterly basis. And what that allows is for more coordination between public health, our hospitals, EMS, and emergency management. So, a significant amount of the work that we do around coordination and safety and security is around that emergency preparedness and readiness. So, we do a lot of work to ensure our systems are interoperable, that you have seamless activities that can happen when there is a crisis that we can respond and mobilize. And MARK really works closely with all of our partner agencies to ensure that we have kind of understanding in terms of who's going to step in when something happens, and we have a coordinated response. So, whether a natural or man-made disaster, that we are ready as a community. And in terms, we do a lot of other programs for our aging adults, including Community Support Network, where we do everything from care management and home-delivered meals to Double Up Food Bucks, which is a program to incentivize better nutrition. More than $180,000 in fresh produce has been spent More than $180,000 in fresh produce has been spent here in the county of Leavenworth through this program. So people are able to go to a farmer's market or their grocery store and buy fruit and some vegetables very affordably. Okay, and now to my favorite part, which is the effect of local government, which is something that I love and believe in very strongly because I know how hard it is to do this work. Under my department, we offer a variety of services to help support local governments, including our Government Training Institute, where we offer everything from facilitation to technical skills. We do a series of exercises for everyone from our 911 dispatchers all the way through to law enforcement and others. We cover kind of the full gamut. So if, whether it's technology skills or supervisory skills, we do training for elected officials, you name it, we offer it. The goal is to really help kind of eliminate the need for every single community to have to recreate the wheel by offering something at a regional level. And we do that in a similar way with a cooperative purchasing program, where Lansing has actually taken advantage of that on a couple of different occasions, are purchasing some high-efficiency streetlights and a backhoe. I am working right now on, looking at how we manage our cooperative purchasing program to ensure that we're bringing the greatest cost savings possible. There are a lot of new ways that procurement can work. If we can simplify the process for cities and make it easier for vendors, particularly local vendors, to compete for opportunities to bid, there's a lot that we could do to not only grow our own economy, but also support local businesses. So I think there, there's a lot that can come with that. We have been working through what the logistics might be and excited to roll that out in the next few months. I also have under me the Public Sector Workforce Recruitment work. So we have, we are working on a regional jobs board. There is actually a prototype that's out there right now that is extremely manual, but what this will do is automatically aggregate all of the public sector jobs across the region into a single site. And what that does is it allows communities like yours to now be out and visible in a way that people who are interested in public service opportunities can now go to a single source, and that has been a huge ask that we have heard from a lot of the area schools and workforce development programs that often don't know where to go to find and identify jobs for students that are finishing their programs, and by creating kind of a one-stop-shop where people can start by, hey, I want to live and work in the community, or I'm interested in these types of areas, you can start to filter that and see that. So that's an exciting development that we're happy to be offering up to the region. Lansing has participated in our regional salary survey, which is another tool we, we offer. Basically, we know it's very expensive to go out and do a compensation study, and this allows for some kind of basic benchmarking of salaries by positions across the region, which can be a useful tool in your budgeting process, among other things. And then Lansing has also taken advantage of our aerial imaging program, so every few years, we fly over, we take lots of really high-quality images, and it saves all of our participating members a considerable amount of money because they don't have to do it themselves. And through our grants, our Small Cities Program, we do provide grant support and really do try to make sure that we provide value to some of our smaller communities that maybe not have a seat at the many different committees that we operate and things like that. In your packet, you have a bunch of stuff, because MARK likes paper and meetings. We have the Leavenworth County, just kind of, this is a high-level overview for you that includes some specific examples of how Lansing itself has seen dollars come back through our programs. Behind that, you'll see, very small font, a listing of all of the members of our various committees that represent your community at the regional level, as well as key staff contacts. So I am more than willing to be your primary contact on any question you may have, but I probably don't have every single answer, and I would be more than willing to work as a conduit for you. But here are all of the people that run kind of different areas of MARK, and if you have specific questions, I'm happy to make sure that you get connected to them. Then, of course, you see on the other side, just kind of a high-level one-pager, this is who we are, and our annual review, which was published earlier this time. So I have said a lot, but I also want to welcome any questions, and if there's anything I can clarify, I'd be happy to do so.
Has anybody got any questions? I got a comment though. For the last four years, at least, like Basar's pulled in 16 million.
It's time for Lansing.
Yeah.
It's time for Lansing.
And we have applied for three grants through MARK, gotten zero.
Yeah.
And I...
No, I'm frustrated.
I mean, that stands out to me.
Yeah, I am frustrated, and there's...
Yeah.
I am very frustrated by that.
I remember you telling us that.
Were those transportation grants?
No.
Okay. So one thing that I would just, I have heard those concerns before, and I think that is something that I...
Like, what is Basar doing that we're not?
Good question, good question. I think some of the pre-planning work is probably why, I think a lot of the, some of the grants have been a direct continuation of a Planning Sustainable Places grant, which tends to happen that if you do the planning work, then it obviously, then they know about the project, and they'll layer in grants. However, I think that is why I was specifically reminded that there are four call-for projects coming up this, in early 2026, and I think another thing that has happened, which I think will really help the way that this process work, is that we have just asked the board to approve a rekind of organizing of the transportation committees. There's a lot of committees, it's very, very fragmented and difficult to kind of navigate, but by simplifying it and hopefully making it easier for cities to participate in it by making it simpler, we think that it'll improve access for those opportunities as well, because it wouldn't be having to attend 25 meetings, you can attend one committee and get the work done.
So we didn't, we've gotten zero. They got 16.
Yeah.
So that is, that is concerning to me, and it's not your fault.
Oh, I know, I know. But I can bring it back.
That is, that's very frustrating.
Yeah, and it looks like, it looks like Basar has pursued a lot of planning grants as well. You know, I think that is always a question that we're going to get, there's a, you know, there's only so many pieces of the pie. I think what this is an opportunity is hopefully maybe to find more ways that we can bring added value to you as an organization, but also by building some of those bridges. I know that you attend and are part of, and we have TTPC representation here as well, but I think, you know, the more that we can kind of connect with you and understand where your priorities are, the better.
So would you be able to help us figure out...
What the grants are that you want to go for?
Well, my question, I'm not letting this Basar thing go.
No, I forgot to do.
Is, what are they doing that we're not doing?
Good question, and I can ask that.
And I would, I would think our staff is, everybody's good as their staff.
Yep, yep.
We have very bright people working here, and that irritates me.
Well, let me go back to the department and see if I can get a little bit of information, even if it's just to help understand the type of projects that were being funded that year, the programs themselves. I think that's a fair ask, and I think that's something that we should be able to provide to.
And then you'll, you'll be in contact with him then?
Absolutely, yes, yes, absolutely.
I really appreciate that.
Yeah, no, I think that's a very legitimate question, and I think that's part of why I, in my role now, feel it's very important to get out into and meet all of our communities so that I can start to hear these concerns and bring it back and make sure that we're really taking a much more practical approach.
When you have grants coming available, do you like send Tim or somebody to say this is coming up?
Yeah, there's a couple of ways that they do it, and one of the things that I'm bringing into the organization is a program where we will have kind of managed accounts, so you'll have a point of contact that will help make sure that you get that information as soon as it's available. So currently, it's done by program, so if you're on that email, you get that email and you get the information. But what we want is to be able to pick up the phone and say, this is available, you're, you may be interested in it, we just want to make sure you're aware, and that's something that we haven't had the capacity for previously.
I guess I have, I have a kind of different question, because I, and it has to do with once you compete, right? So I mean, I know we have competed, so how's the process work to where, and I'm, I'm going to pick on Basar again, just because they're in the pamphlet.
Yeah.
That, you know, everybody competes, and Basar seems to have gotten the bulk of all of Leavenworth County's projects.
Well, Leslie Riviola told us that we weren't using the right words.
What's that?
The Basar City Manager had a meeting one time and said that we needed to refine some of our word choices.
What the hell are those words?
Not those.
I know it's not hell.
So please and thank you.
Our first example was, we revised our last, our first application did not meet their minimum requirements, and it was considered non-aligned, and our second application did align. So we added pedestrian bicycle facilities to our roundabout project.
I think the, the grants that we've applied for are the roundabout twice, and then we applied last year for 4H improvements, and obviously that one was unsuccessful.
And I don't know why, but I really thought we had a good chance on that one.
So did we. But again, the money kind of went elsewhere, so that was, you know, I don't, I don't know. But yeah, it's...
Can we...
That was kind of...
This could be just a, a very, show my ignorance on this topic, but, hey, Basar, can we look at your grant, see what you know?
I mean, it's all public record.
True. Well, that's true.
It's, I mean, it is, I mean, it's, and I think this, this shouldn't be a competition, and we should be able to say, here's why, and it's supposed to be...
It kind of becomes a competition when you're told no three times.
Yeah, no, I hear you.
We want to take our ball and go home.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I think that's, and I think that's part of why, you know, acknowledging that it doesn't come around to every single, I mean, we have 119 cities and nine counties that are competing, so it's a lot, right? And there's a lot of competing priorities, so I think that's...
Yeah, when I read that...
It's a problem, but I would very much want to encourage that we get that 4H project in for this next round.
When I read that and, and saw that, so then I missed, I zoned out on part of what you were saying because I was so hyper-focused on the fact that it was 16 million to zero. I mean, losing is one thing, but 16 million to zero.
And if I, I wish I could speak more to what the applications were and things like that, and be happy to come back with some information though.
So when the federal funding comes down, how is that allocated? Is it all on one big priority list, say for transportation for this, the three that Basar got?
So...
I'm just picking on it. Planning Sustainable Places projects, so it, the federal funding is supposed to go for public transportation, enhance roads, rehabilitate, right, bridges. They got like $4 million from, for that.
Yeah, and because I do...
So how does the, is the funding allocated to, hey, we have, you know, $170 billion, and we're going to allocate X to Leavenworth County, and then Leavenworth County competes on a priority list, or is it all these nine counties?
I believe it works more...
So are little cities competing with Johnson County?
Well, and I think it follows things like our plans.
Getting all the money from everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that whole format doesn't make sense to me, because it puts the smaller cities at a big disadvantage.
Yeah, and I think that's part of why we have programs like our Small Cities Program and things like that. I agree that we, there's, it's challenging when there's not enough money to go around every single time, and sometimes it is the type of grants that have very specific requirements. We're pass-through, we're not necessarily, we're not providing the money, we're just taking, helping the money get into the region, especially for transportation, that's our function as the MPO.
Tony, I would remind you that Basar's smaller than us.
No, I know, but I'm saying, it's like, if, if they're getting all the funding in Leavenworth County, I was wondering if there was a chunk that went to the county and then they kind of allocated it.
It doesn't quite work like that, it's really, it's a bit by, and I think that's partly twofold, right? One is we're voluntary, so people have to want to participate, to pursue these things through MARK, and then secondly, we have to balance between all of, and there's just not enough money to go around, so even trying to do an allocation by county wouldn't work. There's just not enough money.
Okay.
But I will get you some good answers, at least to be thorough, and hopefully circle back with you on that. I do encourage you to, if you have any questions, if there's anything that we can do to provide value to you, please let me know. That is something that I am very excited about and part of the work that I am undertaking as an organization, so very thrilled to be here tonight. I appreciate your time. Yes, sir.
On page number two of your book, there's a sentence which talks about addressing housing challenges. Does the MARK have a stance on the RHID programs that are coming out now?
You know, I've been reading a lot because I read your, your study, and I don't know much about them. We have hired a brand-new housing program manager who started today, who knows a lot about the state work on, on the Missouri side and Kansas side, so I think we'll be in a much better position to answer that, but there are definitely a lot of challenges.
Yes, we're fighting those right now.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. And I think, you know, I think the Regional Housing Fund would, could be a really interesting tool. One of the things that had been mentioned in your study was about looking for senior housing and things like that, aging in places obviously is an opportunity, and to make that more comfortable for folks. That would be, those types of projects could be a great potential project for that. So when that fund is live, we will make sure you know about that because it could be a very valuable resource for the developers.
I talked to a group of seniors the other night, and they think the RHID is great. They want to see the city grow, but they're like 75 and 80, and would just like a senior place to go.
Yeah.
No load, no shovel, no nothing.
Yeah.
One floor, yeah.
Senior housing, yeah.
Yeah, we're, I think Leavenworth County as a whole is lacking in that, so that would be, I suppose we'll bring it up on Podrick.
And do you have any feedback for me on the RFID program? Because that would be really helpful.
Well, it's just like any new program, I mean, all the naysayers show up and voice their opinion, but the people who really don't have an opinion don't voice their opinion.
More than the people that have one, we could will.
Yeah.
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 Well, we had a couple of people who spoke up that were for it.
Okay.
But then they were not treated respectfully, so they just, you know, hey, I'm not going to get beat up over this.
Yeah. We, that is part of the work that we hope to start in early 2026, is looking at some of the housing narrative, recognizing that there's that tension in, in the kind of discourse around housing causes a lot of problems. It means that we miss out on good projects, or we make it more difficult and more expensive because we are unable to come to a consensus as a community. So I think that is something that could be interesting work.
Every program has its good and its bad qualities. You know, in RHID program, and it may, the tax part of it is kind of a bad deal, but some people don't realize that if you increase foot traffic, you double the revenue at QuikTrip, you also double the tax revenue the city gets from QuikTrip, which you put the burden for taxes on the commercial property instead of the property owners themselves, so. But some people are narrow-minded, some people are open-minded.
Yeah.
That's all I'm going to say.
Yeah.
You got to think long-term too.
Yeah.
Whatever the term is when you get to the end of that term. Boom.
Great. Anything else?
All right, anything else?
Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you so much for coming.
I will get some information back for you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And for having tough skin.
Hey!
This ain't nothing, I'm sorry.
I'm usually not a curmudgeon like I was tonight.
I don't think that's being a...
Yes, he is.
We're just being a 16 million, right?
Yeah, but I am frustrated, yeah. Thank you.
No problem.
All right, anybody got anything else? Go around the horn, anything, anyone? And we will adjourn. We are adjourned.